Can you hear me okay?
Yes ma'am, and I believe we have everybody on. So IT is going to unmute and then we'll be ready to ride.
All right. At this time, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, please.
Mayor Walter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Councilmember Cortez? Did you unmute her? Councilmember Cortez?
Here.
Councilmember Yous?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, let's stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we will go to calls to the public. Calls to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comments for three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticisms made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a battery, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during open calls to the public unless those matters are properly noted for discussion in legal action. Ms. Garcia, do you receive any comments?
Mayor, members of the council, due to the fact that the town hall is closed, we did allow for people to call in or to email in prior to the meeting. We did receive no emails and no phone calls for tonight's call to the public.
Thank you. At this time, we're closing calls to the public. Item 6A is a public hearing on an application received from Kim Kenneth Korzowski, Circle K store 9544, located at 3310 North Hunt Highway, Florence, Arizona, for a new Series 10 beer and wine store liquor license, and for council recommendation for approval or disapproval of said license. Ms. Lisa Garcia, do you have anything to speak on this item prior to opening to public comment?
We did receive no public comments. So when you opened the hearing, you can immediately close it since no one did call in. Circle K themselves did call in. They wanted to make sure that the item was on the agenda tonight, and they asked questions. I did let them know that several of the council members had commented that ALSA schools was not on their application, and told them that based on that, we would be noting it for the record, and we would be making sure that the Arizona Department of Liquor License knew that they did have a school ALA near them. It is not within the 300 feet limit. And the town's clerk's office did post the site for 20 days, and we did receive zero comments.
Thank you very much for that feedback. At this time, we'll go ahead and open public comment and close public comment. Members of council, do you have anything that you would like to say at this time?
Question. This is John Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any dates as to when they're going to start construction on this?
This item was for a liquor license only, and it does not go with their construction documents.
So we're approving a license for a facility that's not there?
They are getting a license for a future location for a Circle K convenience store.
Okay, thank you.
If I might, this is Larry Harmer. We did have a pre- we did have a pre-application with the Circle K group about five months ago. And a pre-application allows them to come in with preliminary site plans. We met with them, gave them direction on certain town requirements, and they are going back and starting into their actual application phase. We have not been told when they would submit. Typically, however, the liquor license is applied for prior to those submittals. That is very typical in the industry, so that they know that the services they want to provide will be available to them should they proceed with the actual construction.
Thank you, Mr. Harmer. I do appreciate that feedback. While we're moving forward in that direction of talking about their future site builds and those contract negotiations with them, I feel this is also an appropriate time to bring up the two buildings on Main Street that years ago they told us would not be left vacant and boarded up. I understand that they have these items for lease, but if you could have additional conversations with them during this time, it would be appreciated. I understand it's not noticed for that on this agenda item, so I'm just going to segue back to the item at hand. Is there any questions regarding the liquor license?
I have another question, John Anderson. On the application, it talks about, is there a patio? Please indicate the contiguous or non-contiguous within 30 feet. And it says none. I thought these had patios with them.
Site plans for the Circle K have not been submitted at this time. This is just for the liquor license. At the time that they submit their site plans, anyone who has a liquor license can go back with the state, come back before council, and amend it if they're going to change the building, grow the building, or make any onsite improvements that are not included in its original application.
And the application does show an estimated completion date of August 1st of '21. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? With that, we need a motion.
This is Karen Wall. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the liquor license for Circle K store number 9544.
Mr. Morrison, can I second it? We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries.
Tara, Mayor Walter, could you let me know for the record who made the second? And when we do the motion, will you please call it out since I don't have a visual?
Yes, would you like us to? Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the second item is a proclamation proclaiming April 11th to 17th, 2020, as Week of the Young Child. The Week of the Young Child is an annual celebration which is hosted by the National Association of the Education of Young Children to spotlight early learning, young children, their teachers, families, and communities, spreading the word about the importance of high-quality early learning and the critical role early childhood educators play in a child's development and learning is critical. Ms. Michelle Reamer of the Community Outreach Coordinator for First Things First has requested the town show its support by proclaiming April 11th to 17th, 2020, as Week of the Young Child and acknowledging the importance of education for our children and our community. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, many of the planned events have been suspended. However, this does not diminish the need to recognize the importance of education for our youth. So at this time, we have a proclamation for the Week of Young Child, April 11th to 17th, 2020, whereas First Things First and other local organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 11th to 17th. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs that can provide the foundation of learning for its children in Florence, and whereas teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of young children in Florence deserve thanks and recognition. And whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures. Now therefore, Tara Walter, Mayor of Florence, do hereby proclaim April 11th to 17th, 2020, as the Week of the Young Child in Florence, and encourage all citizens to work to make a good investment in early childhood in Florence. All right, and that concludes that presentation. Moving on to the next item on our agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I lost the live video on Channel 11 through the internet.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm watching.
I still have mine.
Let me check out yours.
Okay.
I'm watching it through the link on the town website. Go ahead, it's just, it's just showing Lisa and Brent.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, we'll move on to item seven. Yes?
I just wanted to let you know that if, John, if you go to Channel 11, you should be able to pick it up.
Oh, okay. I don't have my TV on. I'm doing everything on the computer. Okay, thank you.
Item seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is acceptance of funds from the Arizona Department of Homeland Security in the amount of $177,020 for overtime wages slash benefits and vehicle mileage to conduct Operation Stone Garden border enforcement activities. Item B is approval to enter into a professional services contract with Commonwealth Electric Company for on-call electrical services with up to four renewable one-year options in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Item C is approval to enter into a professional services contract with Goozer Electrical LLC for on-call electrical services with up to four renewable one-year options in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Item D is approval of accepting the Register of Demands ending February 29th, 2020 in the amount of $2,013,354.34. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Is there anybody who would like any item removed at this time?
Yes, this is John Anderson. I'd like to have item B and C removed.
Acknowledged. Anybody else? With that, we need a motion of approving the consent agenda with the removal of items B and C.
This is Karen Wall. I'll make a motion to approve items A and D on the consent agenda.
This is Kristen Morrison. My second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Vice Mayor Anderson?
For item B and C, I have the same question. Our purchasing policy calls for a tab of, excuse me, a bid evaluation sheet to be included in the bid packages. I've asked for this several times, but I still can't get a bid evaluation sheet. So it's just to show what bids came in, who we sent it to, what the amounts were. Just little minor things that I've asked for several times, and I somehow can't get it, and it's in the policy. So how do we get that?
Mr. Anderson, this is Chris Solis, Public Works Director. I need to look more carefully at exactly what was sent and submitted. But to answer your question, and it may be a formatting issue, I apologize for the formatting issue. This was a publicly bid project, and so we only received two in our RFP process. We didn't receive a third or a fourth. So what you're seeing is the totality of all of the vendors in the state of Arizona that were given an opportunity to bid. We only received two. So I will make sure that a bid tab is included on our RFP. We include it for other items, but on something like this, it's very possible got left out. I'll need to look into that and make sure that your concerns are noted, and we always include a bid tab.
Okay, and, you know, I'd like to make sure that we include on there all the people that we sent the bid to, not just the ones who sent back. It shows the no bids also, Chris.
Mr. Anderson, members of council, this was advertised to everyone in the state, so it's not sent to anyone in particular. It's sent, again, it's an open bid because we knew it was going to be over 25,000. That requires for our policy to be advertised, and so it's not sent to anybody. It's sent to everybody. It's an open bid on our website, as well as advertised two times in consecutive newspapers that meet the requirements under the state law.
Okay, well, you need to put that in your package also when you do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I make a motion to approve item B and C of the consent agenda.
Second.
Who is that second?
Michelle.
Copy that. We have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item 3A, Unfinished Business, ordinance number 689-20. This is discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, amending the Town of Florence Code of Ordinances Title 15 Land Usage in Chapter 150 Development Code, Administration and Procedures, Section 150 to 15019, and adding Sections 15020 to 15024, and relocating Part 1 General Provisions Sections 15080 and 15081 to the Administration and Procedures Sections 15020 and 15021, respectively. Mr. Larry Harmer?
Mayor, council, if I can give you just a brief summary. I know that you've heard this before and have had a public hearing and a first reading on this code. I won't go into a lot of details. This is the administrative cleanup that we identified some time ago as one of the priorities that we wanted to take care of in the Development Code. The changes include adding some items that have been legislatively approved or changed to make sure we're current, to make sure that we packaged the internal workings of the code in a more readable and user-friendly manner, done a few things, like added a section for temporary use permit. Interestingly, our code currently has many uses noted as temporary use permit, but no procedure on how to obtain the permission to do that. So this adds that to the mix. This was one of four areas that were identified, well, right after I first started, as areas of the code that we wanted to tackle. The first two were parking and signs. This is the third. And the fourth one, we are working on in-house right now, which has to do with definitions and adjusting our land use tables on where certain land uses may be permitted. So basically, we're working through the work program presented to you previously and in the order of priority.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Council, do you have any questions?
No.
With that, we need a motion.
Mr. John Anderson, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 689-20.
This is Karen Wall.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign? That motion carries. Item B is ordinance number 692-20, which is discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, amending the Code of Ordinances, Town of Florence Title 11 Business Regulations, by amending Chapter 111, Section 11105, F Operational Requirements. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, this is your food truck amendment. At the last meeting, we did have the first reading, and we also adopted a resolution that allowed for the Town of Florence to no longer uphold those rules or suspend those rules for food trucks. What it did was, it took the rules from being 250 feet from a residential area to 50 feet from a residential area. And it also allows food trucks that are using solar or less than 66 decimals at the property line to be within 50 feet of residential. And that is the only changes that are being made to the ordinance or to the Code of Ordinances at this time. It's to be more user-friendly to food trucks within the Town of Florence city limits. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Council, do you have any questions? No.
This is Michelle Cortez, I do.
Go ahead, Councilwoman. Councilmember Cortez?
I was just wondering, and I don't know if you can actually answer this. What, how do we handle a food truck who wants to set up on a piece of property that's like on a commercial lot, but like next to a restaurant? If they have approval from all the other restaurants that are around there, are they allowed to open, or does that not allow?
Underneath the state law, a food truck is allowed to set up on any public street as long as they are not within a residential zone, and as long as they're parked in the right direction and they're remaining there for six hours or less. And so a food truck by state law can go ahead and do that. The Town of Florence does have a map that shows the various location, and I did include it in the packet, that shows where the residential zones are. So commercially-zoned properties aren't really a problem. If someone has a commercially-zoned property and they would like to have a food truck there, they can invite them, and the property owner can give them a letter to be able to be on their property. But all food trucks are allowed to park in regular parking spaces.
Okay, so if it's an empty lot, and they're next to a restaurant, and a food truck has permission from the owner of the lot, they are allowed to set up there? There's no regulation saying that they can't be there because they're within a certain distance of another food business?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Mr. John Anderson. I thought there was a limit on how long a food truck could be parked at a location.
There is a limitation for how long it can be parked, and it's right within the code. Hold on just one second, and I will find it for you. That's within a residential. So in a residential area, it is six hours within a residential, near residential area. But other than that, it, I don't have the section with me that specifies the time period. It's an area state statute.
There was a question about putting it on a commercial lot prior to him building a restaurant or something on the lot.
The question with the particular lot that was being used that brought this ordinance to our attention was that it was within the residential zone. So it was within 250 feet within a residential zone. So that's what brought it to our attention. So we went back in, and we did adjust the, we went back in and we looked at the whole entire map of the Town of Florence to make sure that we did have areas that welcomed food trucks. The other thing we went back in and we did was said that anybody who was going to be using solar or not having a generator, basically, would be able to be within 50 feet from residential. The real thing we were looking at is making sure that people who had a resident in an area could enjoy their quality of life without having a generator, or the person had to be far enough away from a housing area to where it would not harm their quality of life. So it was about the decimals, and it was about the closeness to a residential area.
I understand that. My question is, even in residential or commercial, if they comply with the sound deal, how long can they leave their food truck there? I've lost your sound, Lisa.
I do not have the answer within my materials that I brought with me today. If they're within a residential, it's six hours within a 24-hour period. But there is another state statute, that's Arizona statute. A food truck is not supposed to pull up and just park indefinitely. After they're finished serving, the intent is, is that they actually leave and go back to their home site where the truck is housed. So there is never an intent that a food truck will be 24 hours on any site as if it's a permanent business. The intent of the law is to have a mobile food truck who drives around. I do not have the answer of what the maximum amount of time that a food truck can remain parked. I can either provide that to you in an email outside of this meeting, or I can bring this item back to a following meeting and be able to say it to the floor of what the answer is.
Just send me an email, fine.
All right. Yes, I will do that, sir.
Are you going to send that to everybody, Lisa? This is Kristen.
I will send it to the entire council, the answer.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there are no further questions on this item, we need a motion.
This is Karen Wall. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 692-20.
John Anderson, my second.
This is Kristen Morrison, my second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, New Business. A is discussion approval/disapproval to enter into a contract with Sunland Asphalt and Construction, Inc. for the reconstruction of 28 handicap ramps and 10 non-compliant driveways and sidewalks around the Florence K8 School in an amount not to exceed $156,757. not to exceed $156,757. Mr. Christalis.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'd like to first start off by offering my apologies to Councilman Anderson when I refer to him as Mr. Anderson. I meant no disrespect, but my environment just I lost it for a second.
Didn't even.
Moving on to this item, we have a contract with Sunland Asphalt. There's been some questions on this item. I'd like to address those again publicly. We have a, for the most part, and our entire downtown probably does not meet the current ADA requirements for truncated domes or detectable warning. We chose to work with this project, the location of this project, primarily because it was identified in our State Profs. A school study, which bolsters our ability to get grant money when applying for it. It's always nice to be able to show that we have a study to support the need for this. This project, due to the time for the CDBG project was very limited, and the existing survey for low to moderate income was in place for this. So there was a series of circumstances that led us to this project. It doesn't mean that the project is not needed, it absolutely is. But it would be a bit arbitrary to sit there and say that one area of downtown needs truncated domes more than another. But the idea, again, to remove barriers for children walking to school, parents taking children of disabilities to school. So that's the backstory for this. This particular project is going through the State Procurement Office. We're lucky enough to have a contract that includes a specific language for federally funded projects through a JOC. Sunland Asphalt is the owner of that contract through the state, and so we were able to work out a contract. The difficulty in this is that there are no construction documents. I'm not aware of a single town or city in the state of Arizona that does construction documents for ADA projects. And because of that, the project would probably cost 180% to 190% of our current costs if we were to have engineered plans. The plan that would probably cost somewhere between $75,000 and $80,000, and we're only spending $138,000 on the project in its entirety. So because of that, it's difficult to bid a project when you don't have construction documents. So every town and city uses job order contracting. I apologize. Every town and city that I'm aware of uses job order contracting. I can't speak to what I don't know. Everyone that I'm aware of uses job order contracting to perform these services. And so the town decided to choose the state's contract because it contains that language, which very few JOC's job order contracts contain the language for a federally funded project. With that, are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. John Anderson. What is a truncated dome? Know what that is, Chris?
That is the raised detectable warning device at the ramp that is lowered to ground level to street level, and it is the little, little bump.
Okay.
And that allows people.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If there are no additional questions regarding this item, we would need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the cooperative contract with Sunland Asphalt and Construction Incorporated using the state of Arizona contract ADSB-018-18017 for statewide bridge, road, and parking lot repair, construction job order contracting for the reconstruction of 28 handicap ramps and 10 non-compliant driveways and sidewalks around the Florence K8 School. The amount shall not exceed $156,757.80.
Kristen Morrison, I second. Can we have a second clarifying of who that was?
I also said it, Kristen Morrison.
Thank you.
Michelle Cortez.
Thank you. We have a motion and multiple seconds. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And that motion carries. Item B is discussion approval disapproval of the following changes to the Community Services Advisory Board. Item one is accept Tom Smith's resignation from the Community Services Advisory Board. And second would be to appoint Doris Hagman and William Vitalek to the Community Services Advisory Board with terms to expire on December 31, 2022. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, after the council adopted the ordinance which established the Community Service Advisory Board, we contacted each members of one of the previous boards. That would be the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, the Library Advisory Board, and the Arts and Culture Advisory Board. We explained that the boards had been combined, explained what the duties were going to be, and asked each person if they would continue to serve in their capacity. The only person that said that at this time, they had a lot going on in their life with the especially with the Quinn Building, was Mr. Tom Smith. He said it would be a beautiful time for him to step down and to give someone else the opportunity. So tonight, we are asking council to accept Mr. Tom Smith's resignation from the Community Services Advisory Board. And then, we also had had two applications on file, and we contacted them to make sure that they were still interested in serving. And they said yes. So we're presenting tonight the two applications on file, Dolores Hagman and William Vitalek, and their terms would expire on December 31, 2022. Staff is continuing to look for our two alternates and to communicate with our teens to get a teen liaison to the board.
Thank you very much. I would like to add a sincere thank you to Mr. Tom Smith for serving, as well as all as he has done in and for our community, as well as welcome once-approved Ms. Doris Hagman and Mr. William Vitalek to the Community Services Advisory Board. Counsel, do you have anything as well? With that, we need a motion.
Well, I make a motion that reluctantly accept Tom Smith's resignation and approve Doris Hagman and William Vitalek in relation to the Community Services Advisory Board with terms to expire on December 31, 2022.
Kristen Morrison, I second.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item number 10 is our manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of council, as you're very aware from the deluge of emails that you're getting on a daily basis, these are interesting times in the United States, in the state of Arizona, and certainly in Florence regarding COVID-19 and the various executive orders and emergency declarations at all levels of government. Therefore, my manager's report will be changed from this point forward until we get through this effort to try and do my best to not only bring the council up to speed, but the public up to speed with respect to the town, the county, and our response to COVID-19. So I actually had to prepare this today because actually, everything changes on a daily basis. Our fire chief, Dave Strayer, often says, "Things change every six hours, Brent," and it's absolutely true in terms of how fast this evolution is occurring and how wide the impacts are. So in my report tonight, I have a number of things I wanted to share with council and with the public. As of today, there are confirmed 2,456 cases of COVID-19 in Arizona. There have been 65 deaths as of today statewide. In Pinal County, there are 106 confirmed cases of COVID-19 and zero deaths. In terms of the Town of Florence, we are currently in what we call Phase II status in terms of our response. So for the public, what does that mean? That means that all city facilities are close to the public, and our services, our important services that are provided by the town and by our staff, are now being provided online via phone, via email, or by appointment. The staff of the town has been set up in two different shifts, and they rotate weekly. The reason that the town is on shifts for essential positions is we don't want the opportunity for everyone to be affected at one time. So we essentially split the essential town staff into two different groups. One group works in the office one week, providing services. They're then replaced by the second group in the second week. Therefore, the shifts stay with the same people. So if one shift or a part of one shift is exposed, the second shift is not exposed to make sure that we can provide our essential services to the public. Staff health screenings are occurring on a daily basis. We have standardized staff hours. So all employees that are deemed essential and actually come into their offices on a daily basis based on shift, work from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. daily. Those health screenings occur outside the building at 8:00 a.m. every morning, and that's various different buildings, and have to do with symptom questioning as well as temperatures taken of all town employees. If folks are symptomatic or show a fever of over 100 degrees, they are sent home and asked to seek further medical attention. All staff that can telecommute are being asked to telecommute, and several of our staff folks are actually on the phone tonight because they're on their telecommute week, including Mr. Solis. We I didn't think it was fair to ask Mr. Solis to drive all the way down here for the meeting tonight and then drive back home. We thought we would this would be our first try to have a department director on the phone in terms of a telephonic meeting. And I'm happy to report that not only did Chris do an excellent job, I think he could hear you guys better than we can in this room. It's very difficult to hear what council was saying in this room. And if you're watching on video, you probably saw squinting and talking to one another, trying to figure out what was being said because it's very difficult with the acoustics in this room and the echoing that occurs here. So good job, good job, Chris. In terms of responding to the emergency, the town, our staff, and our administration, our legal team, put together four very important policies to govern how we make decisions and how we staff the city and provide essential resources. First is a social distancing policy. If you can see on the video tonight, we're practicing that social distancing policy. But it goes beyond being six feet apart. It also includes we're doing all of our meetings telephonically. We've asked the folks, for example, in Town Hall that are on the west side of the building to not go to the east side of the building and vice versa. So we're making great use of email and telephones. Our weekly staff meetings, we had one today, they're every Monday at 2:00 p.m. They are all being they are happening by teleconference, not in person. Our second policy had to do with essential and nonessential positions and defining those. The third policy had to do with telecommuting and responsibilities under telecommuting and how that would take place. And then the last policy is our implementation of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. So the various federal acts that have occurred in response to the virus and how the town is administering under that, including things like FSLA and ADA regulations and the changes that have occurred for this emergency. The next thing I wanted to point out to council and to the public is, since this is an emergency and declarations have occurred at the federal level, the state level, the county level, and of course, the town level, there is a great deal of record keeping that has to take place that ordinarily, we don't do. And the reason that that record keeping is to take place is so that any funds that may be reimbursed, or that we need to prove how funds were expended in terms of the emergency, copious records need to be kept. And we've identified Carl in our finance department to be the keeper of those records, as well as weekly deadlines, which happen to be by 5:00 p.m. Should be 4:00 p.m. based on our change in schedule. But by 5:00 p.m. every Monday, those records have to be provided, including hours spent that directly relate to the emergency. That could be meetings, that could be essential functions, et cetera, responding to the emergency, any use of equipment, any purchase of supplies. And we had weekly, we have an update and a talk on that, and our staff is doing a very nice job of that essential and extra record keeping. The last thing that I wanted to point out this evening is the ongoing cooperation with other entities in terms of the response. So we oftentimes think about our coordination with the state. But there are a number of other entities that require constant coordination that are very important in terms of our response, including the Chamber of Commerce, which we have daily communications with, the small business, the SBDC, our regional and state SBDC, of course, MAG, the Maricopa Association of Governments, CAG, Central Arizona Governments, the Arizona Commerce Authority, of course, all of our friends at Pinal County, as well as key parts of the state, including the Department of Health and other arms of the state, including the Commerce Authority, that we have to work with and it behooves us to work with in terms of our response, not only to our citizens, but to our business community and our public safety entities. With that, that's my update.
Thank you very much. At this time, this is our second call to the public. Ms. Garcia, have you received any additional requests?
We have not.
And closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Before we leave, the town manager, I'd like to ask him a question about the prisons and the virus. I heard they were testing some people over there a couple weeks ago. Did they have any results of those tests?
I have to be really careful what I say in terms of responding because there are various rules that protect that type of information.
Oh.
I do have an excellent answer, though, and it's something that I'm very proud of, and that is, our responses to the prisons are of utmost importance due to protection of our first responders, both police and fire, and some of the situations that they have seen in the past in terms of those responses, not just in terms of potential of coming in contact with the virus, or potential to infect folks with the virus from folks that go into the prisons, but personal safety of our personnel and going into a locked-down and agitated environment. We made it a priority last week to work with all of our institutions in the town to set forth response requirements from the health service side of things, meaning our fire and medical department and AMR, of course, but with the institutions themselves in terms of setting a location for pickup that's not central to the prison, triaging patients prior to our crews showing up. It was a very difficult effort. It was led by Chief Strayer, and it was a very stressful effort. But I'm happy to report that we have fully resolved that, and we have a consistent protocol, not only between the organizations or the agencies themselves in terms of the prisons, but also our associations on the provision of healthcare side on as far as understanding of how we're going to respond and what the rules will be for that response. And I think that that is a gigantic win. that that is a gigantic win, uh, for the town of Florence, for AMR, and, and hopefully for the institutions as well, uh, in terms of resiliency in that response.
Oh, thank you so much. That's, that's, uh, a very good response.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, it is called to the council. Councilmember Hughes?
Well, as everybody knows, this is a new day in government, as well as a new day in the world, and I am so very proud of how our citizens are taking this distancing, how they have, um, the neighbors are helping neighbors, and people in my, and where I live are making masks, and they're going out of their ways, they're giving care packages to their, uh, neighbors, and, and it really warms my heart that even though it's a time of reflection, it's a time of hope. So, I want to thank everybody for what they do. Brent and Lisa, I, I applaud your efforts, and, um, you've really informed us on what's going on, and I'm hopeful that we get Zoom and we can see each other's faces pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, very well said. Councilmember Cortez?
Uh, yeah, I'd have to echo what Councilwoman Hughes said. I'd also like to add that we have to remember people who suffer from anxiety or depression, and so this time is really difficult for those types of people, including myself. I do suffer from anxiety, and so if you see somebody out and maybe they're buying some paint or finding something that you don't think is an essential item, know that it might be essential to them and their mental state. Know that maybe doing some yard work or painting the house or whatever is what keeps them sane, maybe keeps them from drinking alcohol or using drugs. So I just want to remind everybody to be kind and to think outside of yourself and think that maybe they're going through something that you aren't. And stay safe. Don't forget to wash your hands and don't touch your face, and I can't wait to see, um, the staff, and I think staff is doing an excellent job. They have kept us updated constantly, um, everyone's answering questions when we have them and, uh, working very hard, and all of us are trying to adapt to this, being at home and making phone calls in the new Zooms that I've attended probably four meetings on, and it's quite interesting to do, so have a great evening, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, excellent. Councilmember Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to echo the same sentiments that everybody else has been saying. Um, I'm very proud of the way that the town of Florence has responded, um, both on the government level and on the individual level. I, um, have witnessed so many acts of kindness and generosity in our community and really people stepping up in this time of need that I'm so incredibly proud to say that I'm a resident of Florence. Um, I've been proud of staff and how they reacted and the communication that we've been receiving, um, from, from staff, um, as well as the email blast and everything else from the state level. I've been really, uh, pleased with the information we've been receiving, um, but also just, like I said, more than anything, proud of the people of Florence, and, and like they said before, you know, mental health is really important during this time. I know a lot of people are going through various stages of how this is hitting them, whether it's a personal, um, relative that's been affected, maybe a family member, um, in their own home even. Um, people are, are taking this on, on many different levels, so it's important just to remember to be kind, um, and remember that, you know, we're all human, we're going through those experiences together, and that we are one community. So, um, I'm really proud of, of us, and I hope that this kindness continues on, um, through this pandemic, because we can make it through together.
Well said. Councilmember Wal?
Well, first of all, I wholeheartedly agree with everything that, uh, our three councilwomen have, have stated. I don't know that I could say it any better. This is a very difficult time, I think, for all of us, especially if we have loved ones who are far away, as I do. Uh, it's comforting to know that, that they are safe, but, uh, there's nothing better than being able to, to hug them, and, and we're not able to do that right now. So, um, I hope that we can send virtual hugs to all our loved ones and to our other citizens that we're not able to be close to right now. Uh, I want to thank our staff for everything that you've provided to us to help us get through this, and as Kristen said so eloquently, I am very proud to be a resident of Florence. So, thank you all, and stay safe, take care of yourselves, and, uh, be healthy and well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and well said. Base Mayor Anderson?
Well, I will put, on a little personal note, uh, being the oldest person on, in, on the council, I've had, uh, multiple neighbors over the last week offered to do things for me because, uh, they know that I'm self-quarantined here, and, you know, my wife and I have decided to try to isolate ourselves as best as possible, and, uh, our neighbors are aware of that, and even some of the town people have offered, uh, and even the mayor has offered to go shopping for me. So I really appreciate how, uh, our neighbors, our friends, and our citizens are reaching out to each other. Now, this is, uh, this is very personal to me, and I just really appreciate everything that's going on. I appreciate our town clerk for her effort to put this meeting on tonight, to get our books to us, coordinate all the communication, uh, efforts that, that had to go on. Appreciate what Trent's done for us. It just shows that, uh, we have a really, really nice group of people, and they're really working hard to make this life under these circumstances tolerable. So, thank you so much.
And I absolutely agree. Thank you. Well said. Well, I want to say thank you to all of our staff who has been working so hard. Um, it's been daily communication, um, multiple times during the day. We've had an opportunity to participate in a lot of county meetings together, governor's meetings together, as well as even a White House, um, teleconference meeting together. One of the items that, um, mayors around the county, Representative Townsend, um, Mr. House, some other people are trying to get this information in regards to the COVID-19 data for information to the local authorities and the general public. So, we're trying to obtain this information due to the fact that, you know, Penau County is 5,374 square miles. We feel that it would be helpful if the numbers were broken down into zip codes, um, within Penau County, as requested several times by multiple parties. So the incorporated cities and towns within our county include Apache Junction, Casa Grande, Coolidge, Eloy, Florence, Kearney, Mammoth, Maricopa, Queen Creek, the Penau County portions, Superior, and Winkelman. So, this is a pretty vast area, especially when other counties are a fraction of our size. So knowing where the cases are are going to help in educating and focus more diligently on limiting the spread. In addition, our first responders would also benefit from having the basic knowledge and specific access regarding information of those who test positive in their area. So at this time, I also want council just to have this knowledge that counties are not being consistent across the state. Some are proactively communicating, and others have been challenged to release the information successfully. So overall, um, we feel that there needs to be clear and consistent leadership at higher levels. So also joining us in this request are Mayor Belloc of Eloy, Mayor Besic of Superior, Mayor Price of Maricopa, and Mayor McFarland of Casa Grande. So we'll continue to keep everybody apprised of, um, that endeavor. I want to close... You're very welcome. I want to close on the acts of kindness that we've seen in the community. In addition to all of the residents that have, you know, been really stepping up and checking on neighbors and offering help, I want to also share the joy that we've seen in the community with the hearts that have been placed in the windows, the bear hunts where somebody puts a bear in their window, and painting rocks and hiding them. I really love the fact that we're able to share times with our families, find ways of bringing hope and joy to others, and it's just really important that we always stay together and help one another and stay positive during these times.
We found two painted rocks.
Oh. See? It's precious.
Yeah.
So with that...
Mayor, could we also... I'm sorry, sorry. Could we also just, um, send out a nice thank you to the businesses that have stepped forward and provided free meals to kids on top of what the school district has done? That is remarkable of those businesses.
Absolutely, and those businesses are, we have Pete Caloris with Mount Athos. Um, he has graciously provided hot dogs and french fries for kiddos for a few weeks. We've also had Jalapenos, um, provide kiddos with meals, as well as A&amp;M has provided pizza slices for, um, children 18 and younger. Did I miss anybody, Councilmember Cortez?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, if I did, please let me know. And I also want to share that I received an email, so when we can all gather together, there's definitely some acknowledgements that I'd like to have us do publicly, um, whereas some citizens have written in and shared some of the positive experiences they've had at some local stores when they had gone to get some essential items, how they appreciated the way that they were treated, how the employees had gone above and beyond. They sent in some specifics. So I'd, I'd like to do something special at that time and encourage people to keep those notes coming in. All right, with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Krista?
And a second? Do we have a second?
This is Karen, all second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign? And that motion carries. Thank you so much.